Good evening. This meeting will be called to order. This is a regular meeting of the Oakland Board of Education. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided. A schedule of regular meetings of the Board of Education was adopted at our work organization meeting in January. And the schedule has been posted and maintained at the school office and in the retrospect and carrier posts. And now, on a roll call.
Mrs. Falpel.
Here.
Mr. Stotts.
Here.
Mr. Rotondo.
Here.
Mr. McMullin.
Here.
Mr. Tavio Beate. And Mr. Schaefer?
Here.
Ms. Bushell.
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. I'm going to ask Ms. Bolden to come up for the Teacher of the Year presentation.
She might be running away right now. Come on up here.
Well, for those of you who do not know this special lady, this is Jennifer Godhelp, and she is a first grade teacher here at Oakland Public School. She is our Teacher of the Year for this year. With that, she is also our district's nominee for the Governor's Educator of the Year Award. So, we wish her the best of luck with that. So, I'm just going to read a little something that Ms. G already saw, so maybe she won't cry too much. But this is what we plan to insert into the yearbook to honor her this year. So, we have Ms. G here. She has been described by others as an exceptional and dedicated teacher who values her students and is always looking for ways to grow her teaching practice. I couldn't agree more. The relationship she builds with her students and their families always extends beyond the school year. She has an extremely pleasant cheerful personality, and it is contagious. On any given day, you will see her former students running up to her for hugs in the halls. In addition to being committed to our students, Mrs. Godhelp is also dedicated to our surrounding school community. She serves on multiple school committees, and she is an active member of our PTA. Over the years, she has volunteered her free time to organize and lead many school-wide activities such as field days, spirit days, pep rallies. I could go on and on with that. Ms. G is truly a special educator who is worthy of this recognition. So, with that being said, here's your official certificate.
Thank you.
And I also must say that Ms. G is going to go down in our history books because she is the first ever OPS Hawk mascot. Thank you to our PTA for the beautiful costume. So, you might see Ms. G flying around our halls, possibly Tuesday, in our Hawk costume. And when I say when she puts her mind to something, she gets it done. She might come to me with a solution to, or I should say, an idea, and we say, well, how are we going to make that work? And if the first idea she has doesn't work, then she'll come back with a second, and a third, and a fourth, until we find a way to get exactly what she was trying to do done. So, I respect her for that. She does so much for the school district and our surrounding community. We love her as much as her students do, and I hope she's here for a long, long time to come. Thank you, Ms. G.
Ms. Bolden, do you want to come back up? Now, we're going to present the Instructional Assistant. Oh, okay. Ms. Salloway is going to come up for our Instructional Assistant of the Year Award. Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening. Can you hear me? Okay. So, we have, congratulations to Oakland's first Instructional Assistant of the Year, Mrs. Michelle Richardson. She told me that I can't say this next sentence, but I'm going to say it anyway. Mrs. Richardson has been a part of our Oakland School Community for almost 40 years. Mrs. Richardson goes above and beyond for her students, not only caring for them, but helping them grow both academically and socially. Nothing ruffles her feathers. She is always calm, cool, and collected. Mrs. Richardson is also always willing to go the extra mile. In addition, she's an amazing support for her classroom teacher as well. We are happy to acknowledge her and are very grateful for having her here in Oakland for so long. Congratulations. And here is your official certificate.
Thank you both. Very well deserved. Oakland is lucky to have you both. Thank you. We're going to move into the Gifted and Talented Program presentation. There will be an opportunity for public comment if anyone is here to speak on our Teacher of the Year or Instructional Assistant of the Year in a few moments. So, we're going to move on now to the Gifted and Talented Program. So, Mrs. Hennessy.
Hello, everyone. Welcome. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Mrs. Hennessy, and I have the privilege of being the Oakland Public Schools Gifted and Talented Teacher. So, just going to give a little presentation on what our Gifted and Talented Program is, how we identify students through that program, and then I also have our students who are part of the program this year who will give a little demonstration to give an example of what we've been doing there. Okay? So, my name is, there we go. A little bit about me for those of you who don't know, on top of being the Gifted and Talented Teacher, I'm also a first grade learning acceleration year teacher here at Oakland Schools. I'm just like seven year at OPS. I love being here. My supervisor's over there, so we're working. My staff covers and students every day. I have a bachelor of science in natural chemistry, so I'm involved in natural chemistry and teaching curriculum. And then, for those of you who didn't know, higher school, I'm also a elementary teacher. So, I had a lot of fun during my, during my task here at Oakland Schools. So, essentially, the Gifted and Talented Program, our goal is to help develop analytical, creative, and critical thinking skills for our students here at Oakland Schools. One student who admitted to the program is based on a project-based learning model. We've got different thematic aims based on both the Q and A. So, those could be based on a theme, but investigation, a science piece, maybe literacy things. We would be done in different kinds of, pretty different languages, or mystery units. So, we try to do as much as we can to involve not just students, but to, I believe. In order to identify students for our Gifted and Talented Programs, we make sure that all students are evaluated. It just happens, starting from junior graduate, but really getting to the end of second grade. So, in order to identify students, we go through teacher evaluation, which is provided all the way from junior graduate to fifth grade. And then, in the second grade, again, second grade, we, and then sort of all the stats, we give a little bit of student abilities test. It measures verbal, nonverbal, and quantitative cognitive ability. Basically, it tests the ability to sort of puzzle pictures and really shows us how things work, whether it's not a normal test they can build to be able to do. On top of that, after students have been extorted and then scored, you will get access to proficient reading on standardized tests, which are square, but usually start at every single student in the subject, starting from junior graduate to fifth grade. And then, based on those, we then might add parent identification survey into the math. Once that whole matrix system compiled together, we have scores, and if students do that by March, we go through the normal process of inviting students to our Gifted and Talented Program, where that starts from third grade to fifth grade. So, once students are identified for the program and have been admitted to the Gifted and Talented classes, we need to do a pull-up program about twice a week for 40 minutes each class. Because anyone wants to do this, we always try to follow a similar model, so we might start with some research. Learning about what the thematic aim we're going to learn about is, doing some background knowledge, what we want to know about said unit, why is it important, how to relate to the real world or real life, a demonstration, and then each day involves learning up wind power, students in order to research about, you know, how do we gather wind power, why is it important, where do we see it, whether we really know, for, I mean. Once they've done that research, we then go through our exploration phase, so they can do some activities or challenges or projects that incorporate all of the research they did and then identify it to the school process or, again, the real world, like the real form. And then, after that, we make sure that we reflect upon what we learned, what was the challenge, and if there were activities we had. Again, how could we take this activity, this high school, or, even in our local community community, at a wire scale, or is it pointing at completion within schools and to what we want to do. With that being said, we're going to have demonstrations, so I'm very happy to say that we have all four of our Gifted and Talented students here tonight to do a short little demonstration. We're in right over here at the viewpoint, and you may not be associated, but I'm hoping that at least everybody who's heard, watched, and listened to, actually, I have to do a demonstration. There are my four.
Hi, my name is Sarah. In this, we learned about the empire and how we, to do this, we investigated different types of, of the wind. We also learned how winds were one, to, to use on it. We did an experiment by making our own wind.
Hello, my name is Sam Martin, and this experiment was, because your challenge to make our windows change, is that started from where we built our windows, that's what I'm in, as well, in this year. We just currently try to tell wind power.
Hi, my name is Sarah. Our experiment was that, um, windows, and we worked together, and we tested with a piece of paper. We also changed the size and, and to work with it. Once we started with two marbles, and we would, we would look at, and then, and watch it stand, and go out to a base, and the timing, and the string twines all the way, and once it went to home, we'd be out of the marbles. The experiment was a big shock to our boys, and we did a strong, trying to come back to the day, and every step of that was good.
All right. So, I have Gavin here, and he's going to help us set up, just for time purposes, not going to go all the way to twelve, right? And we're going to add six.
Six.
And we're going to add those in. All right. We have both of our windows here today, so it was kind of a girl versus boys competition. That's how they chose to do it. So, right now, first, and then we throw the door, and what was your friend's name?
Chris.
Yes, so the window's name was Big First Up. All right. All right. All right, Kelly. All right. Awesome. Great stuff. All right, Gavin, you want to cut up next? So, while Gavin's setting up Ian Sam's window, Clarin, Kelly, do you want to discuss a little bit about reflecting on how it was making Big First Up a little bit of challenges, what some things that you enjoyed doing? So, what were some things that we talked about, Kelly, that might have been positive to Big First Up?
Yeah.
What was think about them in council, right? We had some challenges, some setbacks, a little bit of care, have to work on a lot.
Yeah, so we had to call them all, right? How were, how was it based on the blades? Talked about changing the size, changing the shape. Well, first, we started on the first, not the second. And then, we first, we first, we first, we had to be taught, and then we moved it, and we asked for air. And then, we had toxic, and smaller, and we, we got this, and probably.
So, there was a lot of different products that came, right? And eventually, we got to a pretty successful window. All right. So, now, we have our boys, which Gavin, remind me what the names of yours.
It's Round Albert.
Round Albert. Sam, you want to come close to him, and he touched out Round Albert with Gavin. All right, Gavin. You guys ready? Great. Awesome. So, similar, Gavin and Sam, do you want to discuss a little bit about what worked really well, maybe some challenges?
Well, Gavin tried changing the paper, but then he realized that it was the same type of paper. So, we had to change it again, and now it's not the same type of paper. So, we just changed the size of it, and the sort, and the, yeah.
But, we also had a challenge when this was, when, I think we were like, like they grew up, but the university was just like, coming out, so we picked that one together. And, and this thing was made, um, rounded, it's, I, um, so, and we, we, so.
Awesome. So, that was our presentation. Thank you so much for being kind. And thank you so much for being able to be here tonight. Presentation will not be as fun or as enjoyable as it might have been. Good job.
Thank you so much to Mrs. Hennessy and the students. Appreciate it. I'm going to log back into my computer. Does anyone have any questions for Mrs. Hennessy about the program before we move on? A board member said it, sorry. Nope. All right, super. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. We're going to move on to Committee of the Whole. Is there a motion to move into Committee of the Whole?
Moved second.
Moved in second at all, in favor?
Aye.
All right. We are now in Committee of the Whole. I've asked Mrs. Coleman to give a, he's in, oh, I'm sorry, to discuss the recent bill that was passed last week about stating.
Yeah, definitely not a presentation. I don't want to follow that. And now, I'm going to bore everybody in the room. Finance. Now, so, obviously, no surprise to anybody, we had a rough budget year in Oakland this year. Last week is a flow of activities at the State House, and at the end of it, the governor did sign some legislation which did provide some relief to school districts that lost state aid, and Oakland was one of them. So, I'm just going to briefly explain what I know of the law and how it impacts Oakland. There's still a lot that has yet to be told to me from the state. But at the last minute, the governor found, found $44.7 million in direct state aid that in lieu of having the states apply for stabilization grants, and I'm sorry for my air quotes, it's just how I talk, when I'm a little upset with people. But, so, he found the $44.7 million, so we don't have to apply for stabilization aid. We automatically will receive it. So, that's good news. What's frustrating is that at the last minute, he was able to find that $44.7 million instead of just giving it to school districts in the first place. So, now, it leaves towns in kind of a strange spot because we've already done our budgets, and we finalized our budgets, and we submitted our budgets to the state, and we signed our tax certificates with all the towns. So, the first part of the law is basically stating that we would get the money, and that at some point during the month of June, we are going to have to resubmit our total budget. We're, in that, we have to, and the reason we have to do it in the month of June is for the second part of the bill, which I'll explain. Certain school districts will be allowed to revise their tax levy, and they're requiring that to be done by July 5th, probably before the second set of property taxes, tax bills go up. So, what does that mean? Probably in the month of June, I'm still waiting to get more information from our County Office of Education, but probably in the month of June, you'll see another agenda item, basically revising the Oakland budget for the new total. And you're going to say, well, what is that? We've received an additional $284,000. So, we're basically, we, we were cut $600,000, and we got 44% back. So, that's good news. They're, you know, the governor giveth, and the governor taketh, or he giveth with strings. So, the strings are that we will receive the funds, but then he has commissioned, probably poor choice of word, he has requested that the Commissioner of Education study and report back to him how school districts spend this money, because we don't spend it on education, I guess. So, that has yet to be told to me how it's going to work. They told me what revenue count I can use. I'm assuming they're going to have me track how I'm spending this money. So, the Finance Committee of the Board, I'll presenting it to you basically where I think it best fits in the Oakland budget, and we're going to do our best to plan for the future with these funds. The second part of the bill, which unfortunately does not apply to neither Collinswood or Oakland, and I was hoping it does, is if you were a school district that lost state aid between the years of 2021 and 2025, the governor's allowing you to increase your local taxes. Right now, we're capped at 2%. It allows the local school district to go up to 9.99% to try to recapture some of that lost aid. So, you're going to say, what does that mean for Oakland? Absolutely nothing, because he picked 2021. And between 2021 and 2025, we did see an increase in state aid, but a massive decrease in one year, between 2025 and 2024, but in 2021. So, for Collinswood and Oakland, neither one of those applies. So, my argument to the state is still the 2% property tax cap, just not keeping up with inflation and the costs that we all are living with, the increased costs. But the, the ability to increase taxes does not apply to us. And why 2021? I was explaining this last night to the Collinswood Board. I really believe that when he ran the state aid funding formula this year, if you watched any of the budget presentations, that was the wealth number that they used when they ran all the local state aid for all the local municipalities in the state of New Jersey. They used a 2021 individual tax information of the town. So, basically, the value of your state tax returns. He used 2021. So, I'm assuming, maybe that's why they used 2021, or maybe it's that, in that year, when they did the math, 2021 was not monetarily too bad for them. But, in either then.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yes.
Sorry, is that wealth number, is that a number you can look up somewhere?
I opened it when I got it. So, feel free to open it.
Oh, right, okay.
And when I did open it, there doesn't sound like open it, but when I did do an Open Public Records Act request of the Department of Treasury, they were able to provide that information. And it wasn't correct, right, what they did provide it.
But is that something that someone could do without doing an open request? Like, could you go online and find that information?
I want to say yes. I know you can probably look up your, I don't know if they would give you the totality of the town.
Okay.
That I'm not 100% sure. You can get a lot online.
Okay.
But I don't know if they give you the exact, because when I did the open request to Trenton, I asked for the wealth number for the town that was provided to the Department of Education in the calculation of Oakland state aid.
Gotcha.
So, I didn't want, I wanted it, I wanted the same number they provided to the Department of Ed and not like some random year. I wanted the year they used and what they provided to the Department of Education. So.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyway, so that is, that is not my presentation. But we did, the good news is 284,000, so we are able to plan a little bit for a soft landing in 2025. I do encourage our communities to continue to advocate for our schools so that we are not lost in the shuffle. The governor's final budget address, he has to be done by June. He heard us. He did provide additional state aid. It's a shame that he had to hear people scream in order to do it, but we have their attention, and I think we need to continue, continuing to fight and contact your lawmakers and just let them know that, you know, we're a tiny town, we're doing it right, we should not be penalized for doing it right, and fund the formula. Thank you.
And just to be clear, even though we got a little bit back, we're still down 400,000?
Yeah, just shy of 400, yes.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions about that from the board?
Yeah, really quick. The, so you said the loss over the last three, four years was, so that's like the gross number between, because we lost, what, the 800,000 this year almost, and then, but we gained over that two years ago?
Right. So, he said if you lost state aid between 2021 and 2025, so take your 2025 state aid compared to 2021. If you went the wrong way, if you went negative, then you were eligible. We didn't, because we've actually seen a consistent increase in Oakland every year because with our wonderful pre-K program, you know, and you see that the houses are flying, you know, our enrollment, there was two years ago, our enrollment spiked up, and we're, we're keeping our kids, right? People aren't, aren't moving around. So, I was surprised because we've seen an increase, and then we were not on the list to be cut, because there was that S1 list where certain school districts were notified that you're well, you know, you're way overfunded, we're going to be cutting you for the next five years. We were never on that list. It was complete surprise to us. But, yeah, we, it doesn't apply, unfortunately.
Anything else? Anyone else have anything for Committee of the Whole? All right. Hearing none, is there a motion to come out of Committee of the Whole?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second at all, in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right. Moving ahead to Section 4, so a list of upcoming important dates. There's a lot of PTA, PTA activities. I'm going to skip them for now, because I think we'll talk about them later. Yeah. But you can see everything listed there that's coming up in the next month or so. Moving on to Section 5, is there a motion to approve the minutes from our April Board meeting?
So moved.
Moved in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? All right. Board minutes are approved. All right. Section 6, this is our first public comment section. So, this is for agenda items only. So, if you're here to talk about Ms. G or Ms. Richardson, now's your opportunity to speak. We ask that you please stand and state your name and address, and keep your comments to five minutes or less. Is there anyone that would like to come speak? Yeah, come on up. Come on.
Just so the people at home can hear you.
My name's Emily Martin, and I live on 97 Kendall Boulevard, and I go to Collinswood Middle School. Dear Ms. G, I remember almost everything from kindergarten. I remember when you showed up to Nora's pool party at the end of the year. I remember trying my, my very best to fill up the marble jar for a party, and I remember looking up to you as the greatest teacher ever, even though it was your first year. And this year paid off, winning Teacher of the Year. You've dealt with me, Sam, and had Annabelle twice, yet each time, you've seemed to give me and my siblings the best year, the best and most fun year of education. You never failed to make me smile, happy, and learn the best of my abilities. Hi, my name is Nora Weems, and I live at 63 Kendall Boulevard. Ms. G has always been my favorite teacher, and she will stay that way. She has influenced me to the point that I don't know where I would be or who I would be without her. I remember every day after school, I would make sure I asked her if she would be in the next day. I did this because I was scared without her. The minute I knew she wouldn't be in the next day, I started to panic. She made me comfortable and happy, and I wanted every day to be that way. She was the kind of teacher who made things fun, but still taught us. She has always been my Teacher of the Year, no matter what anyone else said. Thank you for always being there for me and everyone. You deserve this, and I am very happy for you.
Thank you, girls, for making me cry. Can board members, can board members say anything?
While crying.
Absolutely. Yeah, go ahead.
So, I have to keep. So I have to keep this brief, because Ms. G and I make each other cry, but I think I wanna share what Nora said, and I too used to ask her every day if she would be in tomorrow, maybe for a different reason. And she had my son two years, which in Luca years is like eight years, but I asked her every single day if she would be in, because I knew it'd be okay if she was. And now I gotta stop. Thank you for everything.
Thank you all. Is there anyone else who has a comment on something on the agenda that they'd like to speak? All right, moving on, we're gonna move on to Section 7 and the Superintendent's Report.
So this is all the boring stuff that nobody wants to hear about, so we will, we'll get through it really quickly. Section 7.01 is the enrollment report, April of 2023. We had an enrollment of 275. As of April 2024, we are at 269, and it is attached. 02, 03, and 04 are the attached safety drill reports, suspension report, and anti-bullying report. And those are all three attached.
All right, moving on to Section 8, Mrs. Coleman for the Board Secretary Report.
All right. Let's hear it for Finance. All right, 8.01 is a listing of your April monthly budget transfers. 8.02 are your monthly financial statements for the month of April. 8.03 is a listing of other purchase orders that have been issued for Oakland School District. 8.04 is a listing of all the warrants that pending approval tonight will be paid tomorrow morning. And that is it.
Okay, moving on to Section 9 for the Finance Committee Report.
Good evening. For 9.01, we're looking for an approval of transfers listed in 8.01 that Beth Ann just announced. 9.02, looking for the recommendation of the Superintendent for the Board Secretary's certification. 9.03, the Board Certification of No Overexpenditures. 9.04, approval of Secretary and Treasurer Reports listed in 8.02 that Beth Ann announced. 9.05 is the recommendation of the Superintendent for the purchase orders on 8.03. 9.06, the move on the recommendation of the Superintendent of the Warrants listed in 8.04. 9.07 is the 2024-2025 School Tax Remittance Schedule. 9.08, it looks like we're on the last year of the five-year contract with Nutriserve. And 2020, 9.09 is gonna be the 2024-2025 Lunch Rates. And 910, we're looking on for approval of 9.01 to 9.09.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve those items?
So moved.
Moved and seconded on a roll call.
Mrs. Ezekiel?
Yes.
Mrs. Falpel?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
Mrs. Rotondo?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mr. Tabey?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Butchko?
Yes.
Moving on to Section 10 for the Curriculum Report. Mr. Schaefer.
All right, good evening, everyone. Item 10.01 and 10.02 came in after committee, but item 10.01, we're looking to approve the student to be placed on home instruction for medical leave effective April 11th, and that will end on the last day of school, June 18th. Item 2.02, we are looking for tuition reimbursement for Maria Suther for $1,125. Item 10.03, we are seeking approval for the 2024 Summer STEAM Program, which is, will be paid with ESRA funds. I believe we had $22,500 in those funds that we need to spend completely, so that will go to the Summer STEAM Program. I believe there were about 70 students that attended last summer. We're hoping to be around that same number again this year. Priority is given for students who demonstrate the most need, and then remaining seats are filled in. Item 10.04, we are looking to approve the following extended school year summer programs. You can see all of the positions listed there. Item 10.05, we are looking to approve the following summer child study team and related service staff for IEP meetings, assessments, and case management for the remainder of the year as well. So we are seeking approval on Items 10.01 through 10.05.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve those items?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions from Board members? Hearing none, on a roll call.
Mrs. Ezekiel?
Yes.
Mrs. Falpel?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
Mrs. Rotondo?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mr. Tabey?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Butchko?
Yes.
All right, moving on to Section 11, the Community Relations and Policy Committee. Are you doing this, or is Beth Ann doing this?
Beth Ann, one.
Okay. You're up. I'm not wearing your wedding gown, sweetheart. Remember, we had a bet. All right, I got this, okay. So, all right, Mr. Tabey, Collingswood Report?
Yes, good evening, everyone. Collingswood, we actually had two Board meetings this month. First, on the, on May 13th, which was to approve faculty and staff contracts for the 24-25 school year. That was a special Board meeting, so I didn't have a full agenda. Last night's meeting had two presentations, first one being the accordion club who performed for everyone in attendance. It was really cool. Also, Dr. McDowell presented Looking Ahead to 24 and 25. That included curriculum instruction and extracurricular updates, some points of note for our middle school and high school students. At Collingswood Middle School, they'll be shifting to readers and writers workshop model. We have two learning acceleration courses at the high school, one for ELA and one is an integrated math course for algebra and geometry I. World cultures or languages curriculum is being updated for Spanish and for German. AP African-American Studies will be offered in the fall. There will be an additional MTSS coach at Collingswood High School. And Point of Pride for us in Oakland, that all buildings in Collingswood will be looking to follow our lead on our morning PLC and adjust their instructional day after seeing how successful it's been here in Oakland. Student Reports, just that group of Collingswood High School students were able to visit the Holocaust Museum. The Committee of the Whole discussed the state funding updates, much of which Ms. Coleman covered tonight. Let's see. As part of the Superintendent's Report, we have some ME Award winners at Collingswood High School. Our Panther TV students attended the Atlantic ME Awards Ceremony. They had five nominations and received a talent award for our programming. Future dates of note, one biggie for our Oakland community is the 6th Grade Parent Orientation Night, which will be on June 6th at 6:30 PM. So definitely to our current 5th Grade families, definitely want to come out to see that. Have a donation of 250 backpacks containing headphones, composition books, pencil cases, and other supplies for students, which is great. Curriculum Committee approved a class trip for a 6th Grade Accelerated Math Class to visit the pop shop and work on their math skills there. And then, in the Personnel Committee, two faculty members were approved to receive stipends for Special Olympics Unified Schools Grant. And four teachers were approved to mentor student teachers for the upcoming school year as well. And that is all from Collingswood.
Wait, Mrs. Rotondo, PTA Report.
Okay, so the PTA meeting this month was May 7th. Teacher Appreciation Week was a hit, thanks to the help and generosity of the Oakland OPS Communities. The teachers were very spoiled every single day, and we can't wait until next year. Nurse Week was 5-6 to 5-12. Shout out to the amazing OPS Nurse Team, Nurse Jen, who came here for this announcement. Nothing to do with her daughter. And Nurse Mary. On May 10th, we had Muffins with Mom. That was a complete success. The gym was packed, lots of PTA, Dad volunteers were there. Matt Speed did professional photos. And shout out to the OPS teachers and staff that arrived early so that the moms could enjoy the event. Thank you. 5th Grade Committee is busy at work with the 5th Graders, to give them the best send-off to middle school ever. Their schedule of events to follow, as follows. May 31st is 5th Grade Blue and Gold Night from 6:30 to 8:30, and all are welcome to attend and cheer on the 5th Graders. On 6-3, AMASAC sponsored a 5th Grade Bowling Party. On 6-4, there's a 5th Grade Skate Party. June 10th is a pizza party with Ms. Bolden and teachers during lunch. June 13th is the 5th Grade Pool Party. Some other PTA dates, Townwide Yard Sale is June 1st from 9 to 2, with a rain date of June 2nd. Registration is still open, so you can get registered for the yard sale through May 29th. And over 50 homes already registered, and the Oakland Fire Department will be selling hoagies that day. Donuts with Dad is scheduled for June 7th on the front lawn, 7:45 to 8:30. PTA is looking for some volunteers. If anyone is interested, they can reach out to Donna Grebok or OaklandPTA@gmail.com. Spring Fling is June 8th from 2 to 5 in the Borough Parking Lot across the street. Two new Board members for the 25-26 school years. Treasurer is Lisa Angelletta, and Secretary is Matt Speed. The last meeting of the year changed so that parents can attend Blue and Gold Night. The new date is June 5th at 6:30, and the Board members, the new ones, will be sworn in that deck. Thank you.
Mrs. Butchko?
For the AMASAC Report, have that the DARE program is confirmed, including the bowling event for 5th Graders. AMASAC is looking to spend the rest of their grant money, so I'll be in touch with Ms. Bolden about that. Next year's grant has been approved, and AMASAC also cosponsored a Gaga pit that the Eagle Scouts installed in the Veterans Memorial Park? VFW, yeah, park. And I don't know if the floor is in yet, so they had to ask the other day, let you not use it yet, but I think it's coming soon. So that's it.
All right, and I will do the, what report am I doing? I'm sorry, OEF. Okay, so OEF is considering a request from a teacher in Oakland Public School for a grant for preschool. And President Kim Love is convening a meeting of the OEF Board to discuss future fundraising ideas in light of a budget situation in Oakland. And then I will finish Mrs. Marmian's report. Under First Reads of Policy in 11.05, the Committee discussed Policy 5841. We had some questions about the, what Board discipline would be in the final paragraph of this policy, and after some discussion, you know, with, excuse me, after some discussion about discipline, which would have been brought to the Board, which only includes much more serious offenses, they agreed that, we had the word "may be disciplined," and that was adequate. And in second reading, the Committee reviewed all four policies up for a second reading that are on the agenda, and they didn't have any other questions. We have a chance to review them as well, and let Teresa know if you have any questions.
Great, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the policies in 11.05 and 11.06?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Are there any questions from Board members on any of those policies? All right, hearing none, on a roll call.
Mrs. Ezekiel?
Yes.
Mrs. Falpel?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
Mrs. Rotondo?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mr. Tabey?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Butchko?
Yes.
Section 12, miscellaneous, 12.01 is last month's HIBs Report. And is there a motion to approve that item?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions from Board members? Hearing none. Is this roll call, or, yeah, on a roll call, please.
Mrs. Ezekiel?
Yes.
Mrs. Falpel?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
Mrs. Rotondo?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mr. Tabey?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Butchko?
Yes.
All right, Section 13, this is our second public comment section. This is for any item that anyone would like to bring before the Board. Please stand, state your name and address, and keep your comments to five minutes or less. Thank you. Does anyone have anything they'd like to bring before the Board at this time?
Hello, I'm Elise Emmons, and I wrote an essay why, oh, my address is Oakland, New Jersey, 777 of Oakland, New Jersey. I wrote an essay why Ms. Ozeki should not be cut from Oakland Public School. Ms. Ozeki should not be cut because she is nice, good at teaching, and is great with kids. Last but not least, if you get rid of the young teachers, the old teachers will retire in a few days anyways. Claire, where's that part? Ms. Z should not get, should not be cut because she is nice. For example, Bailey said, one day, Ms. Ozeki on Thanksgiving, she made a nice breakfast, and she also, and she also wrote a poster that said things that were nice about us. Another example said by Mia, Ms. Ozeki made me laugh when I was tired and sad. This explains Ms. Ozeki is really nice and kind. Ms. Z is good at teaching. For example, said by Maddie, she helps me catch up on work. And another example said by me, Ms. Z helps us, and we're ahead. She has improved my grades, and many may agree. People, people, uh, wait. This explains Ms. Ozeki is, is good at teaching. Ms. Ozeki is good with kids, for example, said by Riley, she can, she can relate to us because she is younger. Another example said by Alani, she can relate to us because she's not old like other teachers. And also said by Savini, she, she understands us, she understands teaching, technology. Only 10 years ago, she, 10 years ago, she was a kid, so she can relate. This proves that Ms. Ozeki is good with kids, and you should not cut her because some people wanted her as her teacher in next year. You should not cut Ms. Ozeki because, because people that were, are, uh, wait, never mind. In all, Ms. Ozeki is a great teacher, and you should not cut her because she's nice, good at teaching, great with kids. So that's why Ms. Ozeki should not get cut. So that's why Ms. Ezekiel should not get cut.
Thank you, girls. That was wonderful. You did a great job. Is there anyone else have a public comment at this time? All right, hearing none. Is there a motion? Oh, no, do we?
I know, the board has to go into a closed session, so they're going to go into a closed session, we'll all leave, and then, yeah, it'll be over.
Okay. All right, so meeting adjourned for public, and we're going to say back here. Yeah, okay. So meeting to close a public session and go into executive session. Is that first? First, yes.
Yeah.
Oh, is there a motion to do that?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. You've been seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Bye, thank you.
Also, thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight.
Thank you, everybody, yes.